At this time, I'd like to welcome you to our regular board meeting. This evening, we are doing our social distancing so that just so you'll know that we are all of our members are here. Before we ask Dr. Ron Godbolt to lead us in our invocation, I'd like to keep in remembrance the family of Junior McLean. He was actually our fire, he worked with our fire department from 1960 to 1984. He was our fire chief from 1977 to 1984, and he passed away today at 4:30. So just keep his family in your prayers and just know that for a good many years, he was very important here in Hope Mills as far as our fire department goes. At this time, I'd like to recognize Reverend Ron Godbolt from the World of Truth Ministry to lead us in our invocation, which will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. If you would all please stand.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day. You blessed us to see. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for allowing us to come together tonight. And we pray your blessing be upon this meeting. Whereas your protection, your peace over this land through all the turmoil that's taking place, we know you still are in charge, and the hand of God is upon this land, and we thank you for that. Give our commissioners, the mayor, the vision to what they need to do to make this city run even smoother, and your name will get all the glory. Your name gets all the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda that is prepared before you?
Madam Mayor, I don't have anything. Ron, I want to thank you very much for that prayer and very uplifting. Thank you for coming here and doing that for us, sir.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I had to do that.
That's good. Are there any additions or deletions to our agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The first thing on our agenda this evening is a presentation by Police Chief Joyla Charito in response to citizens' concerns. And also, at this time, I'd like to publicly thank Chief Charito and our police department for all that they've done in keeping Hope Mills safe, especially since all the things that have happened since this last weekend. So at this time, I'll recognize Chief Charito.
Madam Mayor, commissioners, thank you for the kind words. I sincerely appreciate it. I understand that there was some concerns, and that's a legitimate thing during the times, I don't want to overuse the word unprecedented, but I think it's appropriate. We've, since pretty much March, had to deal with things that we frankly have not had to deal with before. So it's only natural that in that process, folks would have concerns about various things. So I understand in this particular instance, there was some concerns about crime in Hope Mills and things of that nature. So what I've done, and I was going to make a really nice PowerPoint and full disclosure, I just haven't had time to do it. My apologies. But I understand everybody has a copy of the statistics that I've pulled. I pulled these from January up until today's day, or Friday's date of May. And what I did is I had them compared with the same time period and same reportable crime statistics from last year. So you'll see in yellow is 2019, or excuse me, 2019, starting in January, and it'll go to April. And then on the second page, oh, I'm on the only one second page, excuse me, and then in green, you'll have the current year statistics. If you will look down by each topic, reportable crime, you'll see that for the most part, with very little exception, they have stayed about the same. And in some cases, they've actually fallen by half. And if you have any questions about any of them, I'll gladly answer them.
Does anyone have any questions in reference to this? I know that the concern had been brought up in reference to increased vandalism and the fact that they were having some issues in neighborhoods, but I think this is very, a good eye-opener here that we haven't had an actual rise during this COVID-19.
No, and in fact, from a high in March, we've actually dropped off by about half of reported vandalism. Not to say that there isn't more probably still happening, I'm just relaying what has actually been reported to us. And we had some instances, like we had the young gentleman that was doing graffiti up and down Trade Street and various other places in town, which we were able to locate him and his friend that were doing it. And under the new reporting system, and that's why you see the higher figure for the one month, under the new reporting system that we're doing now through the government, each individual instance is a separate reportable crime. Whereas under the old system, it would just be one crime with a whole bunch of counts. This one, it's each one's a separate one. So that's why you see the drop there, but if you'll notice the very next month, it drops off by about half. Now, that does nobody any comfort if you come out of your house and catch somebody rattling the door handles of your car. That's why we always promote good physical security of your residences, because people do like to go through parking lots or up and down streets, and they will, they'll walk up and they'll rattle your door handle, and if it's open, they're going to see what they can get out of your car. If you leave anything of value in there, it's going to go with you. Fayetteville actually has a very good program where you can remind yourself with trigger words about locking your car and moving your valuables. But that's why you see the highest part there. But if you'll notice, the very next month, it drops off by about half. But each category has pretty much stayed exactly the same as this time period from last year. So, and with that, unless anybody has any questions, I'm going to move on to, there was a question of drug paraphernalia and that sort of stuff being found, and it is out there. There are drugs in Hope Mills. We are actively working drug investigations, but for practical terms, we don't discuss drug investigations. But if anybody has concerns about that, we welcome them to call us so we can look into it. But getting back to the paraphernalia and things of that nature, just as a matter of reference, in the time period between March and May, which was the high point of the coronavirus, and some municipalities had curfews, that's true. They were having issues with house parties, block parties, and social distancing. We weren't experiencing that. So, but during that time period, our officers, we do two types of checks. If you're going out of town, you can contact us. We'll put your residents on a security check. That means an officer's going to come either by your preference, they'll come by your house, or they'll actually go to your house, make sure there's nothing amiss. You know, if you've got a car there, they're going to make sure it's intact and make sure nobody's messed with your windows, stuff like that. Those are called security checks. We also have area checks. If you have a neighborhood where you have a traffic problem, and just everybody knows, with our growth, we have traffic problems in a lot of places, we'll have an officer go to that area, and that's called an area check. And they'll check out there for a specified amount of time. They'll either do traffic enforcement or high visibility patrol. So between those two categories, between March and May, or excuse, yeah, May, our officers, which was really pretty impressive even to me, they've done approximately 3,024 security checks between, or total, with area and security checks. For a 90-day timeframe and the size of our staff, that's very impressive. And of those, I know Trade Street came up in some discussion. Forty-seven times during that time period, our officers were physically on Trade Street. It's part of a nightly check. Now, does this mean that they're going to get out and look around the area for trash or things that people have, no. They're looking for broken windows, open doors, vandalized property. If they don't see that, they're going to move on because our resources are stretched thin. So you try and maximize your time as best you can. The park came up as an area of concern. We do check the park, but we were not getting out and going and checking the dock area and such that nature. Since that concern has come up, and it's a valid concern, you have drug paraphernalia that might be out there, kid comes down there and sees it, you know, it could be a problem. That's a public park. That's part of our responsibility. So since then, we've detailed our folks to actually physically, they're walking to municipal park, they're doing the Greenway, they're doing the Hope Mills Lake, because that's ours. We control it, so we are responsible for it. Trade Street area, if private business comes out and finds drug paraphernalia, call us, we'll come pick it up. If they see somebody in the area that they think is using drugs or drug paraphernalia, call us, we'll come pick them up. That's how that works. So during the timeframe of the Corona peak, which was that 90-day period, which I understand things are phasing back in now, but during that timeframe, we only had two reported house party-type large gatherings. So you take that, you compare it with the security and area checks where our folks are physically present in some part of the town, and then you compare that with our statistics, which has pretty much stayed unchanged and in some categories, actually dropped. This is my long way of working to, why don't we have a curfew for the Corona? The data did not support the need to put a curfew. We weren't experiencing the same type of issues and problems that the city of Fayetteville was when the mayor put their curfew in. And I'm not talking about the current one, I'm talking about the Corona curfew. They were having issues that they needed to attend to, and for them, that was the right tool to attend to it. For us, it was not necessary yet, and as long as the data didn't support it, we didn't recommend it. Now, I know there was some, also some commentary about, I don't know if it was at the last board meeting or just in discussion, your shooting in the areas and stuff like that. We are very well aware of the shooting in the areas. It's mainly, it's various places, but it's mainly in the South Main Street area, behind Archer, Pringle Way, the golf course, or Golfy Greenway. Here's where the problem comes in with that. It is illegal to discharge a firearm in the city limits. We all know that. If the individual is not in the city limits and they're not violating the county ordinance, which governs that with being in proximity to residences, enforcement is problematic at best and for us, nearly impossible. We will come to every reported shooting in the area call that a citizen calls in, and we will investigate it to the best of our ability. So what does that mean? We're going to come to where you tell us you're hearing the shots from. We're going to do our best to see if we can see where the shots are coming from. If we can locate it, and they're in the city or in the town of Hope Mills, we will charge them and take corrective action appropriately. But the vast majority of the times that we're called to these type of calls, the issue's coming from outside our jurisdiction, and we simply cannot enforce our ordinances outside of our jurisdiction. Lastly, I know there's been discussion with four-wheelers, and it is a problem. But the thing that you have to take into account with a four-wheeler, and one, we still want you to call us, because when we come to wherever you tell us the four-wheeler is at, they're 99 and a half percent of the time, they're going to leave the area. They're going to go. They may come back later, but that's okay. We'll attend to that then. Are we going to get any motor vehicle pursuit with them? No, we are not. The hazard to the rider of the motor, or the four-wheeler, the public at large, especially in an urbanized area, be it residential or business, does not warrant the danger as opposed to the crime that's being committed. What we've been doing, which we've been doing successfully, but it takes time, is we identify and we will show up at their house, and we will charge them for every time we've encountered them, and then more than likely, we will seize their four-wheeler. And we've had really good success with this. So when the virus was starting to hit its peak, we limited access to the parks, we closed the Hope Mills Lake, excuse me, not because we wanted to deprive anybody of anything, because I know there was some, you know, well, the Greenway's open, but the lake's closed. Why? Well, the lake is a small area. It was never designed or intended for the popularity it enjoys right now. And so we tried to leave it open for as long as we could, but the problem was, there's no room there for people to social distance. They just, it's just not possible. If you've got a good, beautiful, sunshiny day, as it today was, natural human nature is you're going to go out and enjoy the lake. Nothing wrong with that. But from the coronavirus and abiding by the governor's mandate, we just couldn't leave it open. That's why that one had to be closed. So we've done a lot of stuff to be proactive, but it's not a lot of stuff to where the average person is going to see it and understand it and acknowledge that that's what we're doing. So that's my other long way of getting back to, it's only natural for people to have questions about this stuff, and I welcome any questions anybody has. I'll be happy to sit down and discuss them with them. I had a very spirited discussion with a gentleman from Driver Circle, reference to the shooting in the area, and that's great. That's what we want people to do. You've got questions, call us, ask us. If we don't know, we'll find it out. If we can do something, of course we will. If it's something that we just physically can't do, we won't, and we'll tell you why. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions with any of that.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Chief, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
In recent months, on various social media sites, there's been some folks that have posted pictures of private property vandalism or broken windows or glass or, and these folks have claimed that they have called 911 and that officers don't come to investigate the scenes or the complaints. How would you address these folks?
That's an easy one. I thought you was going to give me something hard.
Yeah.
Every time, because everybody knows that we consolidated with Cumberland County Central Dispatch about a little over 10 years ago. Every time a citizen picks up the phone and calls 911, it is automatically recorded and data stored in their servers. No human hand, excuse me, I'm losing my voice a little bit, no human hand ever touches it to mess with it or anything like that. So say you say, okay, I came out and somebody took my trash can. I don't know why I'm using that as a reference. First thing came to mind. And I pick up and I call 911, because 911's not just for emergencies anymore, it's for everything. Call them, they get my information, we'll send somebody out. You're waiting, waiting, wait, nobody ever comes. I would be, as a citizen making that call, I would be furious. So I'm going to pick up the phone, and I'm either going to call the boss, or I'm going to call the lower boss, or I'm going to call one of you guys. Why didn't anybody come out? And then somebody's going to filter it back down to me, and then I'm going to pick up my professional standards officer, and I'm going to say, hey, this is what I got, I need you to go ahead and look into it. And we're going to go to the Central Dispatch, and Adam down there is going to take the date and time that the call was supposed to be made, and he will pull up all the information, and he will email it to us. And if the call was actually made, everything with that call is right there, to include what time it was received, how long it may or may not have been held, and what time was it dispatched. And when you get to the what time was it dispatched, that is what officer received that. Now, that's an easy one to follow up on. It's all digitized, it's, it leaves a data trail the whole time.
Well, thanks, Chief, because there's been a number of folks that have called me that claim that, that they've called 911, they wait, they wait, they wait, nobody comes, nobody does anything. So I'm glad you answered that.
And as you get those calls, I ask if you would send them up that chain, because I'm very interested in stuff like that. You have an expectation as a citizen, when you call 911, whether it's to ask a question, whatever, somebody's going to show up. And for us, unless all our resources are tasked out, you're going to get somebody in a reasonable amount of time.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, sir.
His name. Chief, again, I'd like to tell you that anything I've heard has always been kudos for you in the fire department, but there was a couple of stories that I was told, and one of them was right before the COVID incident. There was two gentlemen, and I'd say in their 30s, they were talking to one another, and they said, if you decide to rob a bank, don't do it in Hope Mills. The other guy said, why? And he said, because you either get caught before you get out, or they'll track you down, but you're going to get caught.
Thank you.
And I thought that was really nice. And there was another one, I believe it happened on Saturday, they were having a high-speed chase on Rockfish Road.
Yes.
And they had a wreck.
Yeah.
And there was two officers that were there, and there was two people in the car, and one of them started running. Well, there's two gentlemen at one of the food trucks that said 21, he's going to get caught, and sure enough, he ran him down, caught him. So they see that, and they have a lot of respect for you all.
Well, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that sincerely.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Chief, I don't have any questions. I just want to compliment you guys for all that you've done in the past, especially the last 60, 90 days, and then with everything that's been thrown in our lap this week. I think you guys are doing a fantastic job, and you're doing it very professionally.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm proud to say that I'm on the same team as you are. So keep up the good work.
Well, thank you. It's a team effort.
Anyone else?
So I, I'd just like to say.
Turn the switch on.
I'd just like to say thank you. You answered all the questions that I had, and I thank you, I appreciate your work during COVID-19, what's going on in the last 48 hours, but all the other times as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. If anybody has anything.
To say you'll know too, that today, we have received numerous times, numerous messages thanking us for our police presence, and several of the business owners in, and Mr. Boyett, who owns the shopping center up where Food Line is, he called to let me know that he's in Raleigh, but that he knows that what we're doing in Hope Mills, that we're looking after their best interest. So for me, that was not only a compliment, but for somebody from somewhere else, letting me know that they appreciate what our police department's doing, I thought that was a great compliment.
Thank you, ma'am. I sincerely appreciate, and again, it's a team effort. The police department, fire department, public works, that's what makes everything works together. So as opposed to, as far as this stuff, if anybody thinks of anything that we didn't address, just let me know, either through Ms. Adams or call me directly, and we'll address it for you. And thank you for indulging me in my raspy voice.
Thank you, sir.
Guys, have a good evening.
Thank you, Chief.
Next, we have our public hearing for the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget ordinance. And do we have anyone here that came to speak in reference to the budget? There's no one here, and we had no one through public comments or anywhere. Okay, so is there anything more that the board wishes to discuss in reference to our budget? And you do have the budget before you, the small version now, that has all the final information in it. So is there any questions in reference to that?
I think we've drugged that thing around for a long time.
All right, well, at this time, we can make it, we can actually adopt this current budget, and if that is something that you would wish to do, do we have?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion to adopt the 2020, 2021 fiscal year budget ordinance with a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing?
I'll go up to 30.
Seeing none opposed?
Madam Mayor, I just want to add a comment.
Okay.
This is a budget that meets the needs of our departments. It's an excellent budget from both standpoints, and I think that collectively, with all the department's input, with two budget workshops and a number of questions that we've asked, that we've all learned something from it. It's been very informational, and it moves our community forward. It moves our employees forward with the needs of our community. And I just want to thank everybody that was involved, especially Drew, Melissa, and all the department chairs for your input.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And next, we would like to consider to adopt the proposed 2021 fiscal year fee schedule. Do I have a motion to accept that as before you?
I'll make the motion. We accept the fee schedule listed.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the proposed 2021 fiscal year fee schedule. We have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. And I too would like to thank our staff and Mr. Holland and Ms. Adams for getting us a budget on, not only timely, but June 1st. We're a month ahead of time, so no late-night meetings in June to get it finished before July 1st. So congratulations on that, and congratulations on no tax increase, and yet we were able to give the call up for our staff, and we were able to add some additional employees to help maintain Town of Hope Mills. Next, we have public comments, and I do have someone that has signed up for public comments, and we'll invite them in. If you'll just introduce yourself for the record, and then you have three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. Hi, my name is Cynthia Phillips. I live at 5247 Heather Street, Hope Mills. I'd just like to say good evening, Madam Mayor and commissioners and town staff. I normally come to the board meetings and I sit over in the chair, but tonight, the only way I could actually say thank you was to sign up, so forgive me for being nervous. I just wanted to say thank you and how proud I am of my town. Your quick response and obvious training paid off for all of our citizens. These are scary times, and I pray for all of you, and I pray for our town. I was going to go, I was going to stay home tonight, and I even posted to some of my friends that I was going to stay home. I was kind of afraid to go out, and then I realized that you guys were going to be here, so put on my big britches, and I said, well, I'm going to go and sit in my normal seat and not be afraid. So I said that. I do enjoy attending the town meetings. I've learned a lot about our town government. I even signed up to serve on a committee this time. I look forward to seeing you all under better circumstances, and thank you for all you do. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out this evening. Appreciate it.
Can we give her a round of applause? We don't normally get that. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. We usually get the other side of that.
Yes. Okay, next, we have our consent agenda, and if there's anything you'd like removed from the consent agenda, if not, do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda as it is before you?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. There is no old business. Next, we have new business, and that is a non-public hearing case number 18-020, consideration of the Nicky Gray Motor Vehicle Sales CP Site Plan Review, Hope Mills Zoning Ordinance Zone CP, acreage Point 43 plus or minus, located at 3121 North Main Street, and it was submitted by Nick Hoy Gray, developer, and I'll turn this over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Hello, Madam Mayor, board members.
Do we have, do people have any that are involved in this?
Yes. Yes.
I was going to say, it's a non-public hearing.
I think because they're the...
I think that's the...
I think that's the, the business owner.
The owner.
Okay. First time they use that code.
Yeah. I think he just wants to be here since he's the business. This is the renewed site, site plan.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Board members. I didn't put the projector up because this is just us rehashing a case that we had from our April meeting. The actual new site plan is on, I think, page three or four in your packet, and I'll be speaking to that. I will give you some background information to kind of explain why we're here. The subject property is initially a 0.43-acre tract located at 3121 North Main Street, zoned on the CP, the CP Plan Commercial District with approximately 70 feet of frontage. In September of 2019, the site was approved for motor vehicle sales with a site plan that was designed in a manner that placed the custom parking in the front and the display area for the vehicles for sale in the rear of the building. The development went through another recent approval by the Board of Commissioners on April 20th for the addition of a storage workshop in the rear of the property for vehicle repair. At the April 20th approval for the vehicle repair structure, the Board of Commissioners noticed that development was not being operated in a manner consistent with what was initially approved on the site plan in September of 2019. As the site plan indicated custom parking in the front, staff noted the business owner had been displaying vehicles in the front, although the approved site plan indicated the display area in the rear. Town of Hope Mills staff sent out a notice of violation to the property and business owners, giving them 30 days to take corrective action. In terms of the current proposal before you, to this evening, in response to the notice of violation, the business owner has filed the new site plan with a proposal for the vehicle display area to now be in the front with the custom parking area in the rear. Staff has recommended approval, and I will note that he actually, I think that might have been in response to the events from this weekend, the vehicles have been moved in the rear. But I wanted to let everybody know, you wanted staff to hold the building permit from the April 20th until he complied. What's being presented for you tonight is his corrective action, to be able to at least request to the Board that you approve him to be able to have the cars up front. And that new site plan that you see reflects that change. I'd like to open the floor to any question that you may have.
Yes, sir.
So, so what you're saying is, at least in that thing that you need to do?
Correct. The notice of violation typically, I think, either you or Commissioner Bellflower has raised it in terms of, he initially had the parking area, I mean, the display area in the front, that was the violation. So this site plan reverses that, so that he is allowed to actually have the vehicle display area in the front. I think Commissioner Bellflower has raised some questions about, in terms of paving and handicap space. What we did, what we have customarily done in the past, and I, I've used Ted Hill's, Hill's Landscaping as a perfect example, that's a landscaping business. The nature of that business operates with dirt and gravel, because they have sod and stone and things of that nature. But because they expanded it and rezoned, they were required to add two handicap parking spaces. So well, if you go out to that site now, the entire site is gravel, but at the front, where the two required handicap spaces are, they are paved and striped handicap. Based on the site plan you have here, their handicap required space remains in the front, but I think we could take that approach if, if so pleased the Board.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And Chancellor, and thank you very much, and thanks for the, the owner, are the owners here? Thanks for coming. I, I think, and I appreciate everything that you've said, the, the site plan that we have before us tonight, it has, the custom parking is in the back, and then the used car display area is up front, and that's different than what it was, what, two months ago?
It was basically exactly reversed.
It was flipped. The, the issue that I have with, with approving the site plan, and, and I'll be honest about it, is that there's no ADA handicap designated parking.
Yes.
And that's, and, and it's, and it's on the site plan. That's the thing. It's, it's clearly noted here on the site plan, but it's not actually at the property location. Even on the site plan, it says that there needs to be, there needs to be one...
Handicap place. That's correct.
There needs to be one, and at a minimum, I, I believe that's, you have to be compliant with that, with handicap ADA parking. Is that correct?
That's correct. The actual ADA handicap parking space is, is actually a building code requirement. Zoning requires a certain number of parking spaces based on the character or use of the building, but then the building code designates based on that, how many of those spaces have to be handicapped. So based on the nature of this, there's one handicap parking space, and that hasn't changed. The handicap parking space was in this like, location at the previous approval, but your point is noted that if we were to bring up the Ted Hill piece, that handicap space would need to be paved to be able to comply with the ADA requirements. That's correct.
And with that, how many, how many actual parking spaces up front is the maximum for this property site plan?
Based on this site plan, he has two proposed parking spaces up front, one handicap, one regular. The requirements only require seven total spaces, but our zoning does not dictate if it, where those spaces have to be. So based on this proposal, he has, I think, nine parking spaces in the rear, two spaces up front, so he meets the parking requirement. We don't dictate where he places the parking, but I will say, based on just the nature of the type of business it is, being in a, it's a car dealership, it makes sense for him to want to have a display vehicle, display area visible to the public, but, and he has that here, but I understand your point in that, and he has a, the business has a handicap ramp as well, so it makes sense that we enforce that regulation on that handicap parking space.
That would be, and Madam Mayor, that would be the condition to, to approving the site plan, is, is that he needs to be in compliance?
Yeah, that's correct.
With the handicap space, and probably, probably that ramp as well.
And, and we thought I can have our Chief bin the specter just to make sure the ramp is ADA compliant as well.
Okay. That's, that's all I have, Chancellor.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Okay. Other questions?
I'm going to just approve case number 18-020.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve case number 18-020. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other conversation?
Yes, with the...
Condition.
Condition for the handicap. That's correct.
With the, with the conditions.
Right, with the handicap. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda would be our manager's report. Is there anything in our manager's report you would like her to go over, or do you have more to tell us?
I have a couple of additional items.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions concerning my report? I, I included the update to town operations, and then I also included the press release regarding the recycling program to begin. And we are looking at trying to get some publication about that, either getting it in the sans for the Fayetteville Observer, having somebody do a little blurb about it, also on the Marquise.
Are we going to do a mailing list?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to do a mailing list?
No, we, we're not going to do a mailing list. We'll see how that first week goes.
I didn't quit doing it the old way, so.
Right.
I don't have to break the habit.
And, so if anyone, does anyone have any questions or concerns about any of the items? I'll, if not, I'll go to the additional items that I have.
Only got one thing, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
How much was, how much was the, the contract for the seating of the, of the lot next to the chapel? Do you remember?
Oh, gosh. $2,770.
Okay. And the other question I have is, and this probably, this one's for Drew.
Okay.
How close are we to final authorization approval from SDA?
We're in the queue. That's all I know.
Okay.
They're working kind of like everybody else at capacity, and it's been submitted, and we're just waiting to hear back.
So once we hear back from them, the next step is...
Then again, once we hear back from the initial, then we can do the RFPs for construction. And then once we submit, then, then we can actually approve the loan itself, that the 60.5 is sufficient for what we need.
Got you. Okay. Oh, I got one, one other just came to my mind. Have we heard anything from the part of Grant?
No.
Okay. Good.
Nope.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the additional items I have is that the contractor began work on the Gulf Beach Greenway project today, and the Public Works were scheduled to start spraying, mosquito spraying two weeks ago, and because of the weather, they're hoping to get it started this week, correct? So hopefully, can we please not have any more raining? The last item is, I, I received notification, and I forwarded it to Public Works, that personnel with the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, Division of Emergency Management, Risk Management, will be installing gauges on the Hope Mills Dam in the near future. And they indicated it's not necessary for us or our representatives to be present when this occurs. And that is all that I have from, from my manager's report.
Thank you very much. Of course, we've got reminders of meetings coming up, and, and all these meetings will be able to take place, so that's, our committee meetings will be occurring starting on June 10th. Committee liaison updates, if they've had meetings, if you have an update. I'll start with Commissioner Edwards with the Appearance Committee and Mid-Carolina Council of Government. The Appearance, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Appearance Commission, they did not meet, and they will meet in June. I did attend a, on May 19th, we had a conference call for the Mid-Carolina Area Edging, and there was 13 members on the call. Tracy Honeycutt, who is in charge of it, she explained that each year, an update to the plan is required, and that any barriers to the plan would be addressed during the updates. Some discussions centered around transportation being a major, major barrier for many seniors to be able to access services. This was in regards to our 2021 budget and our plans that they have worked very hard on for the last year. And she did an overview, and what they're concerned with about the senior citizens is the safety and protection of vulnerable and older adults, opportunities to lead active and healthy lives, keep communities that are well-informed about choices and opportunities, a strong and seamless continuation of services and supports. I am supposed to be the coordinator for Cumberland County. The only one that we have is actually connected with Mid-Carolina would be the Senior Center in Fayetteville. I've had several ask about why Hope Mills was always excluded about anything dealing with the seniors, and so I told them I would mention it at the meeting, so that's all I have to report. Okay. All right, next, we have Commissioner Legg with Historic Preservation and Rulak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Historic Preservation Commission did not meet. And Rulak called a meeting by computers the other day, I believe it was Thursday, because I had a doctor's appointment at the same time they had that meeting, so I have nothing to report. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, next we have Commissioner Marley with Veterans Affairs.
Yes, ma'am. The Veterans Affairs Committee met on 5/28. After that meeting, I sent an email out to all the Board members, and I copied the Veterans Affairs Commission, they had a, a good meeting, and they had some concerns that they asked me to relay to everybody, so that's why the email was sent. I think there might have been some misunderstanding, and I want everybody to know that I didn't send an email for, I got a response from the town in 4E, I guess it was, and I didn't send that email to get a response directly from them. I apologize for that. And I think they actually did some corrective action based off of my email, but that was not being intended. I want the manager to know that was not being intended by my email, but I do appreciate that happened. I just wanted to bring everybody up to date. And I, I'll go over with everybody, so everybody knows. They had this discussion about what transpired at the lake on Memorial Day. I think they finally come to the conclusion of just a little bit of misunderstanding, miscommunication, and they had, and after that discussion, they had some questions about if there was any policies that the town had for holding events on town property. So you got to come to my email, so maybe you can address that.
Yeah. If, if typically, if it's a special event, we require someone to fill out a special event application, and the Special Events Committee meets and goes over it, and either approves it or disapproves it. If it's a town sponsor, something that the town would have been involved in anyway, we don't do that. We skip that process. With this event, had there been some sort of notification prior, I feel certain that the town would have been supportive of it. I know I would have been. And then we could have advertised it, we could have put something on the website, and we could have put something on social media, announcing it, and letting the citizens know that it was going to happen. We wouldn't have charged them the permit fee, but, you know, that didn't happen, so I don't know what to say.
Yeah, I, I told them that, you know, I advised them that we did, I didn't know anything about it. I didn't think the district or staff knew anything about it.
I forwarded the email to you all concerning it when I saw the email, so...
That was that day?
Um, it was the day after.
Or day after.
The email was sent to me on Sunday. I had, obviously, on the weekends, I checked my email first thing in the morning. It was sent after I had checked it, and when I looked at it Monday, that's when I sent it to you. And that was already, that was a holiday, so, but I'm not sure that that would have even been enough time for us to get, you know, a lot of notification out. But again, there is a process to go through for a special event on town-owned property, but I feel like this could have been town-sponsored. We wouldn't have made them go through that process had we been given advance notice. We would have been supportive of it. We would have allowed it. We just would have liked to have had some notification.
Well, and it would have been appropriate for it to go on through the Veterans Committee because they were already having an event that we were aware of, the putting the flags out up at the Veterans Memorial. That's what does, that bothered me, is that our Veterans Committee does such a good job, our VFW does such a great job, that, and the sponsors of that meeting know town policy. So that bothered me even more that they sidetracked the people that they should have involved on the front end. And that's just, I think it's important that, that we could have had one event sponsored by the town and had done all of it.
Yeah.
And that would have been appropriate, I think. So it was a good, I mean, it's a good event, it's great that they did it, but...
We would have liked to.
It would have been, yeah, I think, yeah.
I think the Veterans, Veterans Affairs Committee had the same sentiment that they would not have been involved in that, because I got to the last word I had was at the last meeting, where Commissioner Bellflower said that they had canceled their Memorial Day, they were going to carry over to Veterans Day. had canceled their Memorial Day, so they're going to carry others to Veterans Day and take care of that, but they, that was the first thing that they had discussed. The second thing I had was, they had several concerns about was making this at the park concerning the area running the memorial, and the issues were the flags not being lowered in the memorial. They just made mention that, and there's like a directive from, I guess, the governor or the president or something to lower the flags, they had noticed that sometimes they didn't get lowered. They wanted to replace the flags with high-winden rated flags, I think that was addressed in the email that was sent back.
It was.
They would like, they said they would like to see a taller flagpole for the American flag at the memorial. They said whenever they put the flags at half, it was kind of hard, they put them at half because the flagpole was so short. When they put the American flag down, the other flags were so low, I guess it was hard to see. They had a concern about the maintenance of the grass, the weeds that had taken over the flower beds. They asked if the mulch could be redone with madding under the mulch. They mentioned that the benches needed attention, it looked like maybe somebody had, you know, bumped into them, knocked into them, knocked them off level, and run stable for people to sit on. They mentioned about an ant problem, I think a lot of this is already being, like I said, addressed. Pine needles removed regularly. They required about a new fence along the backside, I guess the one that's near is kind of ratty or, you know, doesn't look pleasing. They mentioned about the poles and chains needed attention, like paint, and that were, it looks like somebody might have run into them, and some of them were lopsided. They would also like for the memorial area over there to be more handicapped accessible. And they hang up, going back to the flagpole, they were wanting to know if they did replace the flagpole at the memorial, if the flagpole that's there could be moved to the lake and replaced the flagpoles at the lake, because the one over here is a little bit taller than the one at the lake. That was just a suggestion I had. And they also had some concerns about the dog park being located behind the memorial. They asked, they asked if that area could be used for handicap parking for the memorial, and Mr. Blinn's had made a motion, or made mention that the town had budgeted for repairs to the memorial, so that was, that was real good that we were ready to budget those repairs for the memorial that were needed. And they also had a discussion about trying to submit a more formal budget request to the town in the future, to try to secure more funding for the Veteran Affairs Committee. So they're trying to do, they're trying to be proactive, they're trying to do a lot of things with women and children. And so I believe that was everything. Like I said, I just wanted to relay that to you, because it was a lot of information, and I wanted everybody to have time to read it and look at it, and I didn't intend for what happened to happen, but.
Well, it got done, didn't it?
A lot of the work got done, I don't know if y'all seen the email that was sent.
I did, yeah.
They already took care of the maintenance, they sent pictures of flower beds, the pine needles, the grass. I mean, they really went to town on it, so I appreciate it.
Well, that just shows the kind of staff that I have, they're outstanding.
Oh, yes.
If you could please let them know that that wasn't in my email.
It's funny, I know it was.
Anyway, that's all I had from the meeting.
Okay, you had quite a meeting.
I have a comment about that. Parks and Rec now has signed up for their automated notifications of when flags will be lowered with staff.
That may have been one of the issues, that they weren't on that notification.
Good.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
And I do have a, just a comment about the dog park. My only concern, well, I have a couple of concerns about that is, I would not want to take that dog park away without having another location and funding to put in another dog park. And the second thing is, putting handicap parking there is going to require funding for that as well. So if we, I have no issue with that, I just think that's something that needs to be looked at and investigated. We do have, hopefully, coming up this next year, a sponsor that is willing to give us some, some funding for some additional items in our dog park to kind of improve it. So I would hate to see that dog park go away and not have another location for it. So that's something we probably need to look at and see what we can do.
And Madam Mayor, and you know, Melissa, in this budget, we just approved, we approved an irrigation or water line to go, to go to that dog park.
Yep.
So that's another issue that.
Yeah.
Also, also, I'm sorry.
No, it's a bad time.
If we made that a handicap parking lot, it'd have to be asphalted, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir, and that would require additional funding that we don't have right now, so. It's something maybe we can look at next year, or?
I think there were some for disabled veterans and stuff to visit the memorial. You know, that Jane access is a future.
Through our ADA assessment, was there anything mentioned about that as far as, because the handicap parking does mean that they have to travel a good distance, I mean.
When we did the assessment down there, there is ADA, there is ADA access there. It's just, it's from the parking at the Parks and Rec building.
Right.
It's a little further than probably, we'd like it to be, but there is an acceptable route to it.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mayor Pro Tem Dr. McCray with Parks and Rec Advisory and Cumberland County Air Quality Stakeholders Committee.
The Parks and Rec Committee did not meet in the month, the last month. We planned to meet in June, and the Air Quality Stakeholders Committee, the last time we met was in April. I reported on that, we're doing a meeting again in July.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. My committee, FAMPO Transportation Policy Board, we did meet by Zoom or by go-to meeting. Ma'am, Ms. Starling was there, it was a good update, they gave us information, and of course, they stressed the fact that with some of the funding with DOT, some of the projects were being delayed, not anything cut, but just delayed. It was a pretty good meeting, and we had a pretty good turnout as far as, by way of our go-to meeting. Also attended virtually the Senior Tar Heel Legislature Meeting, and that was pretty much the update from Ms. Edwards, because we both were on that same thing, and the recommendations that they're making to the legislature, those were actually voting on what we're going to send in, didn't really have a good workshop, because it's difficult to have those conversations when some people are on the phone, and some people are on the computer, so, but they're working to make sure that there's some way of making sure we get what we want for our seniors to the legislature. The FCE DC has not had a meeting. Also, I had a meeting, which was kind of neat, it was a virtual scout meeting, and I did, they had, we've had two months that they were supposed to come in and get their work on their community civic merit badge, and that's one of the most difficult badges for them to earn. And because of the timeframe, and because of the fact they needed it now, we did it virtually. So there was about twenty scouts and a couple of scoutmasters, and they were from different troops, and they had prepared questions, and then we were all on Zoom, and it was, it was very exciting, because they were all good questions, it's all about our town, about being mayor, and about the commissioners, but that was probably one of the nicest meetings that I had virtually, because of the fact that these young men and women, technology is not, they're not apprehensive at all about it, whereas some of these other meetings, you had some people that, you know, were a little bit afraid of the meeting, and being afraid of being, their pictures weren't there, and these kids were all over the screen, so that was a good thing. Other than that, that's all that I have to report as far as meetings go. We have not had a Tier One meeting, it has been, the past, during this whole period of time, all of our Tier One meetings have been postponed, and I'm not sure when we'll have another one as far as Tier One, they haven't given us any update. Staff comments? Mr. Hartsaw, any comments?
I'd say it's nice to see everyone in person.
That's right. It's good to be back together, even if we're social distancing, it's good to be back together. Anything else, Ms. Adams?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Official comments, I'll start with Commissioner Marley, you have anything? Mayor Pro Tem?
The only thing I think that I would like to say is, listening to Commissioner Edwards' report, and this is for next year, I would like to have discussion about transportation for our senior citizens and people that are disabled here in our, our community. And again, thank you to everybody for your hard work, and I know that this is a difficult time locally and nationally, and just ask for everybody to, to work together to kind of achieve some efforts in some goals, but I appreciate everybody, and it's good seeing you today in person.
Thank you. Commissioner Legg?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to say thank you to Melissa, Drew, Jane, anybody had anything to do with this budget, great job. Great job, guys, your department has stepped up to the plate, and we got this out of the way in a hurry. And I think we're going to be okay if the tax dollars don't get us. So you guys go home, stay safe, and God bless you.
Commissioner Edwards?
I'll reiterate what Jerry said, just be safe and God bless, that's it.
Ms. Bell Flowers?
I'd just like to also support all the efforts that went into the budget. You know, we're growing as a community, because we've just approved the first fourteen million dollar budget in the history of Hope Mills. And we approved that without a tax increase. So that is a lot of, a lot of heads-up work, and everyone should be commended for that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. I would also like to thank our mayors, our pastors coalition. I've received several emails today saying that they will support us any way we need. Most recently, the pastor at Timberlake Church of God said that if our fire department or police department needs a place to go, or place to park, anything they need, that their church is available, and he actually lives in Wilson, North Carolina, but he said that he had already made arrangements that they were available. And then, of course, the other churches that have come forward with, if we need something, that they want to make sure that, they know that we're, they're here to help us. And I think, you know, prayer is one of the best solutions to times like this, and I'm very appreciative of the fact that our churches and Hope Mills unite together at times like this. I too appreciate all the work that's been done, and I believe that in all my time as mayor, even though we did start really early today, this is the first time I've been, I'll have been asking to adjourn at, by that clock, seven minutes after eight. So those of you that have been with us all this time, you know that this is, this is early meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good week, and we'll see you soon.